You got the agenda before you, is there any changes to the agenda? Other than we want to remove letter six G from the agenda, anything else to be changed other than that? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? I approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams makes the motion. Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. Do we have a chance to read the minutes, we have a motion to approve? Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. No visitors, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we allow leave of absence for Heather Andrews, pre-ten aid at Ider.
Aren't you part of the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. Home job entry.
Recommend that we approve the home job entry. Alonso England, zero days.
Aren't you part of the recommendation, have a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. Does anyone have a problem with all the resignations and retirements together? If not, go ahead, Mr. Pepper.
I'd like to recommend the following. Amy Celeste Smith, elementary teacher, Ider resignation. Jerry Duke Free, junior high custodian, room home at junior high, resignation. Rhonda Bell, itinerant special ed paraprofessional, Ider special services resignation. Melissa Gilbert, varsity cheerleader sponsor, coaching duties only, Geraldine resignation. Donnie Stevens, junior varsity boys soccer, coaching duties only, Crossville High resignation. Mark Corl, assistant football coach, coaching duties only, Crossville High resignation. Jonathan Peppers, junior varsity girls basketball coaching duties only, Crossville High resignation. Melissa Townsend, secondary English teacher, Sylvania resignation. Taylor Gibson, secondary science teacher, five resignation. Jesse Hemphill, itinerant special ed teacher, DeKalb special services resignation. Alice Alvarez, CMP worker, Collinsville resignation. Rhonda Johnson, secondary science teacher, Plainview retirement. Vicki Yancey, elementary teacher, Crossville elementary retirement. Roger England, bus driver, Crossville elementary retirement.
Aren't you part of the recommendations on resignations and retirements, have a motion to approve? Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
And Mr. Richards makes a second, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. I do transfer one at a time.
I'd like to recommend Cindy Black, itinerant ELL teacher, transfer to secondary English teacher, Plainview.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Jonathan Cole, nine-month assistant custodian at Crossville Elementary, to ten-and-a-half-month custodian at Crossville Elementary.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion.
Second.
We already had a ten, ten-and-a-half month.
Mr. Coleman.
Any other discussion? All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Tiffany Clinton, from summer program CMP worker to summer program CMP lead worker. And I know we did these at just the last meeting, but the lady that we made the lead worker, her husband has fallen sick and this girl knows a little bit more about what's going on, so. I know we just did this last time, but we're having.
Aren't you part of the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Robin Bynum, transfer from PE teacher Moonlight to PE teacher Geraldine, and Mary Dixon, PE teacher Geraldine to PE teacher Moonlight.
Aren't you part of the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend transfer of Ms. Poundover, itinerant paraprofessional, five elementary, to itinerant paraprofessional at DeKalb special services.
Aren't you part of the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Deborah Highlands, transfer from CMP worker at Plainview to CMP worker at Sylvania.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
And Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
All placement somebody in the background review making certain built-in criteria negative, free form of drug screening, inappropriate certification. I'd recommend Chris Condi, secondary English language arts teacher, Collinsville.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Josh Clement, secondary math teacher, Sylvania.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Chuck Williams, secondary PE teacher, Valley Head.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. I think, I think there's been a few that probably won't.
I was gonna say, you got plenty of community support.
It's not the coach yet. All those that play, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
I'd like to recommend Mr. Brian Knapp, secondary social science teacher, Valley Head.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Tammy Markowski, foreigner assistant custodian, Plainview.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
I'd like to recommend Michelle Smothers, CMP worker, Crossville Middle, Crossville High.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Nicholas Hensley, junior high custodian, room home at junior high.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
And Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. Any questions?
Recommend Steve King, head girls basketball coach, five.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I'm not the, the record for one, I voted over there. Alright, next.
Recommend Stephanie Poole, varsity cheerleader sponsor, Geraldine.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Pepper seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Brian Knapp, head football coach, Valley Head.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Chuck Williams, head basketball coach, Valley Head.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Will Brown, junior varsity boys soccer coach, Crossville High.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Donnie Stevens, junior varsity, varsity girls soccer coach, Crossville High.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Recommend Blake Wilkes, junior varsity girls basketball coach, Crossville High.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries. Where do all the summer placements begin?
You do.
Yeah. Pull it up, pull it up. They said.
I'd like to recommend for summer placements, this is for summer school. Tammy Lanier, CMP worker, Sylvania. Sarah Culpepper, bus driver, Ider. Amy Finlayson, sub bus driver, Ider. Hannah Culpepper, student, sub student aide, Ider. Douglas Muffield, teacher, Crossville. Donnie Stevens, teacher, Crossville. Melissa Cogburn, teacher, Crossville. Daniel Bryant, sub teacher, Crossville. Ashley Bryant, sub teacher, Crossville. Kimberly Osborne, sub teacher, Crossville. Bruce John, student aide, Crossville. Hope Norwood, student aide, Crossville. Eric Lopez, student aide, Crossville. Rosa Alarco, student aide, Crossville. Tammy Mountain, sub bus driver, Crossville. Leah Richards, sub nurse, Collinsville. Chris Camps, bus driver, Collinsville. Julie West, teacher, Collinsville. Jordan White, student aide, Valley Head.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Pepper makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
I'd like to recommend Alexa Williams, teacher, Collinsville, for summer placement.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, have a second.
A second.
Mr. Richards seconds, in discussion. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. As.
Alex's name.
Let the record show that the motion passes with Mr. Pepper's name. Do you have any contracts or? Alright, let's go ahead and go into the policy discussion. We'll go talk about the, another way the averages for the virtual school too.
Virtual school probably free.
Yeah, so that's virtual school, does anybody have any discussion on virtual school?
I feel like we need to go into this thing very gently, spend the limited amount of money we can and offer it out there and see how many people comes in ship before we do all this spending and if it gets bigger then we can adjust, adjust to it. That's what my opinion.
Anybody else get a discussion on virtual schools?
I agree with that side, like, to see what kind of the teams will have in it before we get into it to be.
We think it's gonna be pretty significant, but you know, weighing the balance between what, what money you put in upfront and what you get out of it.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
I was talking to Brian, I think that we should do like an open enrollment and then we can kind of get ballpark where we're gonna be. We, we've talked to a couple of reached out to a couple of things with mobile units with RV that we're talking about, so relocated, we touched base with DMA director Anthony Clifton and they've had a donation that's been given to them as command center, a mobile command center. They're willing to help us kind of piggyback and use that thing until they need it, until we kind of get ourselves on our feet, so that would be at no cost except all the just. But I, I want to see the number before we really commit full, wholeheartedly about it, but we might set that up in July and just see what we're gonna be here for a couple of weeks and see, see what's gonna happen.
There's no telling how many numbers are out there.
Sure. It may, it may be more than we expected, it may be way less than we expected.
Anybody else get discussion on virtual schools? The, any other, any other policies that we had up in the the policy about the weighted averages on the.
I think those, this weight average thing, I think is the one that we're probably considering, making just a few adjustments to, the rest doesn't have to. We're still gonna lay them on the table until the next meeting, thirty days to be done, so the one that I think that we talked about, that we'd like to see the changes made is adding the list of the advanced courses in the weighted process and what me and Brian talked about, Mr. Collins and so on, but we would take those advanced class teachers and try and get a list of advanced courses that would be considered for that, as far as AP courses, build enrollment courses and try to level the Plainfield for kids that might not have the access or the money to be able to go on to those other classes, so we're gonna try to, after the last meeting, we had all this come up, so we're trying to find a way to level the field for everybody that can be able to find a start point and still compete for valedictorian, sedutorian, like ten. So I, I think that's gonna be one thing we want to do, set up media of advanced teachers to make a list of advanced courses that'll be considered in that subsection. The other thing that we talked about was that we start this with the tenth, in, in coming tenth graders, not the ninth graders, kind of phase it in there and give opportunity for those kids by the time they're seniors to be able to adjust to these policy changes to make.
So that way, not making like that.
We'll get a chance to make adjustments to the schedule and plan for the future without having to, you know, we don't put too much pressure on them.
And then. Getting that, saying, well, we knew that, we're gonna do this.
Yeah, and then the other thing was that it really caused us a lot of problems from last meeting is that we've been doing the calculations for the Valsale top ten at the end of the third nine weeks and the problem with that is, is you got kids that might take the hard courses second half of the semester and they might shut down the last nine weeks, so we, we'd like to see change to all the way through the end of the school term before we make that calculation. We want them to earn it all the way to the end and not just start putting the coaches on, so we'd like to see that change in policies as well.
And also because of the dual enrollment, not having a, pretty inconsistent, I guess, whether it's a high school teacher or a college teacher, whether we're giving those nine weeks or not, so. We're not getting grades on those until the end, which how many do they want to get their grades in?
And dual enrollment, it's in May, it's late, it just, it's causing problems, but you know, it is gonna give those kids opportunities because they might not take a dual enrollment class if they think that it's gonna affect the Valsale top ten because that will finally be my grade back, you know, so this is gonna level that, if they'll be able to wait on that. And it does cause headaches and problems for our counselors and principals. We just need to pray open and help them, so all we can do is just give them support to try to do all that calculating at the end. But I think that it's the right thing to do.
So, so be clear about what we're, what we're probably make changes in, what was presented in the last meeting, is does it want to affect any, any senior, kind of senior from actually here? Want to affect any juniors, just for, want to affect, I guess it would affect possibly sophomores, but they, they not taken anything yet.
Should have been big tech.
Yeah, the one, the one thing that I was, I was concerned about that definitely, because that's in the middle of the spring making a change. The other, the other thing was, we're not, we just came to dual enrollment. You're talking about people who might not come either aboard those, those classes. And it wasn't real clear what classes should be considered, if we're talking about, you know, physics or breakout or something like that, which is a which is a pretty advanced course, but we're not talking about letting those, if we were even gonna do that. So what, so what you're saying is we won't, we really won't do anything until the committee comes forward and makes a decision.
That's right.
But, but for purposes that everybody knows, starts school, we're not messing with the seniors or the juniors.
Yeah.
So they don't have to worry about the kids.
This, this committee's just gonna come up with a list of the AP approved AP courses that'll be recognized.
And so, yeah, if we don't finish it this summer, then it'll be next year.
Some of our courses, they require pre-recognizes, you know, when I was going into ninth grade, it wouldn't, not everybody took algebra one, some of them took business math, very bottom, like math one oh one, they'd jump into math one oh two or one oh six or one ten, whatever it is, so those that kind of know where, if they want to take those AP courses, just give them a good starting point, so once we get these classes recognized, they'll know where they're going.
So then, so at the next meeting, we'll like, we'll like this policy? Any discussion on that?
I don't want to put you on the spot.
I, I.
At last, at last meeting, but is that, is that gonna be clear enough for the counselors at this point, even though we don't have a policy?
If they not include the ten grade, I mean, you say we're not gonna play eleven to twelve, so you're gonna play the ten, which can take dual enrollment this year. So, are they included? That would be what I would ask, because you said you, they need to know where it's gonna start.
Well, I think it's, it's, I think that would be good, they know now, because.
What way?
Count for drop. Putting all that together.
Because that can take dual enrollment, it can grade maybe higher than we.
That would be the only thing different from starting in the, it would be, I would prefer starting in the ninth grade. With the ninth graders, but if, if we're talking about tenth graders or the first year, that they can take those, those courses then. And that would be, I could, we could talk about that, I, I the main thing is that we do not start with people who are in the string, they need to, would blow the door open.
I mean, the students could change some of the problems.
The, the last or the third courses, I guess what I'm trying to say, it will not be done. Sure. If we're going to play the ten.
That's what we're. Or otherwise, we might, we'd have to wait until. By the day, you know, the board meet later this month.
If like, if you have a, you know, if a level playing field, everybody knows what's loaded on. Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead, next up.
Okay, alright, the legislature passed a raise, cost of living rates for the teachers, and there's been some debate about what to do, and we've been trying to do some research ourselves. For everyone that makes under seventy-five thousand dollars, they recommended a four percent raise and they recommended, well, actually, that's what they recommended, then they excluded principals from that list and then they recommended two percent raise for seventy-five thousand and above. What we've run into is, is really messing up our salary matrix. It's really ongoing to affect about six or seven of our employees if we just do four percent across the board, because cost of living has gone up for everybody in the road. And people in here probably making worth of thirty thousand up to hundred and thirty thousand, so all of us are paying the same for gas and groceries and those types of things, so what I'd like to do is just recommend, Brian had done some research, called Jackson County, they had talked to twenty-one systems and twenty of them were gonna do it four percent across the board. Seems like about eighty percent of the state is probably gonna do that, so it, it just makes sense to do four percent across the board, so I'd like to recommend a four percent raise across the board for all our employees.
Did it affect six? Go ahead. Uh, let's go into a motion, we got a motion on that? Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second.
A second.
Mr. Pepper second, in discussion.
Six, five, what you call that?
Six or seven, we're talking about supervisors, they have important jobs.
Principals, principals, as you said, they're getting the four percent. And we talked to, you said you talked to other systems and.
We talked to other systems, most everyone, we've talked to, what we've gathered is about eighty percent of the state is doing what we're doing. Because your, looking at your salary matrix, it may start high and then come back down and work back up, and it's just, it just really don't make sense.
So this goes into effect down there first?
Yes.
So you're basically talking about us picking up off the whole four percent of the two percent.
Right, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, just in general, we just hired a supervisor and I looked up his pay scale and he wanted to know how much the pay would affect him, and it was going from eighty-two thousand to eighty-four. So as the highest paid supervisor we have, so if we got six or seven people, you're talking about twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, it's over a half. Is the, is the cost, we'll just do the four percent across the board.
Because we're gonna have to go on this now, or we go to another now?
Could it doesn't start from? I'll start with one.
Is this something that the judge will study before we do it, or? Okay, any other discussion? Cough the boat. All those that play, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Aye, said the motion carries.
Miss Clinton had been looking for a CMP salary matrix and according to her monthly operating experience, she's pretty much met that and went above it beyond, and she has made recommendations that we give to CMP workers a two thousand dollar raise. So I'd like to make that recommendation.
Aren't you saying the, I guess this is in the back.
Yes, there's there's a matrix in the back.
And this, this includes the. Alright, do they have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Wood makes a second, in discussion.
We don't really have today to do that, do make recommendations.
It is recommendations of two thousand, of course this is on top of four percent raise, correct?
Some school workers will not be, they'll keep on four percent.
That'll be four percent?
Just survive.
So no, no support is that big? Any other discussion? You all act like you want to make a discussion, but I haven't heard anything.
We were trying to come up with a.
Alright, I'm waiting.
Are you in favor of the two thousand, Mr. Sharp?
Am I in favor of it? I'm, I'm the chairperson, I'm asking you.
I feel like if we stick with the two thousand, it won't be voting, it'll be voting down. My opinion. And we, in order for them to get anything, I think we're to go with a thousand, and I'd like it to go there.
Like I looked at fifteen hundred, it's gonna cost her five hundred thousand dollars. This is what I'm doing.
How much?
Fifteen hundred, it's gonna be about a hundred thousand, increase from.
The one, one thing that I was concerned about, I know the work she did this month, and if we were looking at Moonlight, it was like three hundred thousand, but how that, that concerned me, I know overall, about two million dollars, but that was, that was a big concern for me.
Well, they were hard, because I worked at a Geraldine elementary one day, and it's very hard work. But I just hate for it to be voted down and not get anything and do a thousand, maybe get something.
You recommend a thousand?
Yes.
Okay, good one, everybody. Resent the motion, second? Second.
I resent a second.
Mr. Wood, do you have the second, you ever sent your motion?
I'll do it.
Mr. Richards?
I have.
Presenting yours. Okay. It still might not pass him. It might, look, you make a recommendation.
I make a recommendation for a thousand dollar raise from the CFP.
Aren't you making the recommendation on that, we have a motion, do we?
Make a motion.
Mr. Richards makes a motion. Okay. Mr. Wood seconds, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay, that's the vote. Nay, I'd vote for three, two. Texas. And I was nay on the, I was nay on the four percent also. Let's see. Alright, next up.
I'd like to recommend that we move our high school and tech school counselors from a nine-month, five-day salary schedule to a ten-month salary schedule, raised before they have counselors, they have two days to work anyway, this is just reimbursing them for their time, if you've talked to a counselor, they probably got to do something, they work all hours of summer, and we, we would be glad to offer up, anyone that'd like to opt out to work for ten months, given, given a group, those that don't want to accept it, but they're already doing the work, we might as well pay it for it, so I'd like to recommend we move them to a ten-month contract.
Chief of recommendation, have a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Richard makes one, thousand, second, Mr. Pepper second, any discussion?
We've been talking about this for fourteen years, so.
I think we're probably going to de-system for the nineteen thousand, so, you know, these are, alright, any, any other discussion? All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed nay? I have a second, Mr. Carius. Alright, more members? Mr. Wood, you have a thing?
I just gotta thank y'all, thank you to all of y'all for attending this meeting at six o'clock, because I wouldn't have been here if it didn't been five o'clock.
You wouldn't have been here at five o'clock either.
No, I wouldn't, I forgot.
Would you like our next meeting to also be at six?
I, I, I left work at fifteen oh five, now you got cleaned up, and I like that.
Really?
I did.
It, it's a little bit of a party to have a meeting at six, but we are happy to.
Since you're on your way out.
Since you're on your way out, we're, we're big after that.
If you just come back, it'd be all joy when I'm gone.
Alright, Mr. Richards, you got a thing?
Yes, sir.
I think I probably had a couple things, but I can't remember what they were. Alright, DEA, okay, ask them.
Thank you for bringing us in this over there. Did I understand correctly, with no support, this is only a four percent raise?
I don't understand it to be a certifying, that's the way I understood it, real job.
That's not always the code.
Okay, we'll find out.
We will be moving into that also.
Okay, would you call me when I, I'll, I'll be, so, if you find out.
The state, the state four percent.
What? We will tell that we, we, we will be taking all of the pictures, and I'll find out, we're gonna make sure.
I'm sure you will. Are you thinking, yes? Alright, our next meeting was gonna be June thirtieth at six o'clock. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Wood makes a motion, have a second. Mr. Williams second, any, any discussion? All those papers say aye?